Welcome everybody to the Village Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, March 6th, 2023, at 7:11 p.m. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Can everyone please make standing, please? A moment of silence for all that perish in the earthquake in Turkey and Syria. Please sit down. Do you want to vote, please? Trustee Hagan?
Present.
Trustee Corrigan?
Present.
Trustee Alpert?
Present.
And Mayor Curly, present. Upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, April 3rd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. And a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, May 1st, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Can I get a motion for the approval of February 6th, 2023, Board of Trustees meeting minutes, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan, can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Alpert.
Second made by trustee Alpert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. I'd like to set a public hearing for April 3rd, 2023, at 7:05 p.m. for amendment for the Village of Suffolk standard schedule of fees, please. I was gonna start that, we're still working on those fees, so we're gonna set the meeting for that day. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made by trustee Alpert, can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Attorney, please, Terry Rice.
Thank you. We're talking about a proposed amendment to the PO4 zoning district in the village. The PO40, the PO15, and the PLI zoning districts are intended to be industrial office, commercial space in the village. And the major goal of those zoning districts is to provide a tax base for the village. When Navartis announced it was leaving a number of years ago, we changed the PLI zoning district in which they were located to ensure that there were only tax generating entities that would be utilizing the property, ensuring that it substantiated the tax base. And it was important because both with Navartis and a number of years earlier, the Tilcon quarry going out, the bond rating companies were questioning the village's financial status and it affected the bond ratings. So we are going through a process that's going to probably take the rest of the year of revising the village comprehensive plan. But in the interim, we took a look at the PO40 zoning district, and we have the same issue there. The PO40 district, the professional office district, is intended to have, again, tax producing entities there, particularly professional offices. And the PO40 district's located along Route 59, primarily in the vicinity of Good Samaritan Hospital. So again, we'd be looking to have tax generating office uses and similar uses in the zoning district, which presently the zoning law allows, but not exclusively, because by special permit, you can have private clubs, you can have schools, and you can have the other use, if you give me one second. Private schools, colleges, and seminaries, dormitories, accessory to schools, and private clubs. So the local law is intended to remove those uses so that we only have the tax producing uses in that zoning district. The planner did a rather comprehensive study to look at that and dealt with the financial repercussions and the fact that we need to continue to support the tax generating uses in the village. She also looked at the fact that the uses that we are proposing to take out of the zoning district have ample locations in the village in which they can locate, so we're not zoning out any of the not-for-profit uses that might locate in the PO40 zoning district. So she prepared a memo, she prepared an environmental assessment form, and at this point, I did a resolution that actually combines both B and C to refer the proposed local law to the Rockland County Department of Planning for their general municipal law review, to refer it to the village planning board and to refer it as the zoning law requires to the village attorney for form, and in addition, to set a public hearing for April 3rd.
Can I please get a motion for the resolution referring to proposed local law?
It's B and C, I didn't want to...
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Regarding land use and, one second. Land use in PO zoning district and a motion for the public hearing for April 3rd. Motion, please?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made by trustee Alpert, second, please?
Second, trustee.
Second made by trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Grant program, Fred, please.
Good evening, Board. A very brief update today. Parking lot B, worked with the mayor, Michael Janito and Charles Swicki, and we made a partial payment to Tilcon on that parking lot of $200,000. And then we put in for reimbursement, because we have a grant, it's a reimbursement grant, CDVG grant. And we put in for the reimbursement, and I'm happy to say that the county has already paid us the $170,250 that they owed us. So that's a very quick turnaround by the county, so I'm very pleased to report that tonight.
Thank you, Fred, and just for people know, because the sum of the job wasn't done to our liking or good enough, and we held back a certain amount of that money as a guarantee that they would get that other work done, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police department, please, Chief Rockland.
Good evening, Village Board. On the month of February, the police department responded to 861 calls for service. I wanted to bring brief to Board on a series of catalytic converter thefts that we've been seeing in our area recently. I'm sure the Board is already aware of it. Catalytic converter thefts are basically a nationwide problem that's become rampant in recent years. For those that don't know, a catalytic converter is a component in the exhaust system of a motor vehicle containing precious metals such as platinum and rhodium. The metals make the catalytic converters worth anywhere from $800 to $1,200. A coordinated team can remove them within just a few minutes using battery operated tools such as a reciprocating saw. From mid-2022 to present date, approximately 300 catalytic converter thefts have been reported to police agencies throughout Rockland. Our village has received 19 reports during that time period. Residents should be aware that of the 19 reports that we received, 14 of those thefts occurred on 2003 to 2008, model year Hondas and Accurus. We believe these type of vehicles are being targeted more often by the thieves because of the location of the converters on these vehicles makes them easier for the thieves to get to them, and they're more quickly removed. Last week, myself and several PD members met with Mayor Curly and discussed the thefts. We posted some tips on our social media platforms to make residents aware of the problem and to aid them in safeguarding against these thefts. We've also deployed additional personnel to shifts that we're seeing the thefts occur on for targeted directed patrol of areas more likely to be targeted and investigation into suspicious vehicles and activity. I wanted to make the Board aware that these thefts are on our radar as well as all the law enforcement agencies throughout the county, and we're gonna continue to do everything possible to discourage thieves from committing these crimes in our village and educate the public on how they can protect themselves and their neighbors from becoming victims of these types of crimes. If you have no questions, that's all I have for tonight.
Sorry, I was just gonna ask a quick question. What was the period during which we had 19 thefts and stuff?
So that's from mid-2022 to present date.
May 2022.
Mid, yeah, May, June, yes, correct.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you had to just sort it out with the chief, made the lieutenants, man, even the detectives, okay? And it was a two-pronged approach, okay? They did their work, the police department on it. And it's one, is we came up that we're going to buy a movable camera system, which Intel uses that they can move, you know, right now, we're getting one. If we find more grants or money, where Fred's gonna come through for us, and we're gonna get more, because whereas your house can catch up in these green cameras, these other cameras can do more, okay? And the second mode of attack that we all discussed and worked on, which was great, is that he's moving around certain police officers to work different shifts where he feels it's more probable to happen. So they worked well together, well, we came up with good answers, and we're just gonna, we can only do, we can... You know, these guys are like, as I said in my post and as you guys know, they're like race car teams, you know, pit stops. They come in, they have a guy watching, they have a driver, they have a guy that goes and eat the car, and they got wax, they can get out of there in minutes, two minutes, they're in and out, okay? So, you know, as you said, chief, you put tips on your site and keep your, maybe your lights on. I know Jose Martinez, Lieutenant Martinez, has had come up with where you can actually, there's places you can find things you can put on the car to make it safer and whatnot. So we're not, we're like every other community, but we're not sitting and just accepting it. We're trying to fight back as a community. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen, Culture and Recreation?
Kathleen.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. So yesterday was the fundraiser at the community center, fabulous day. Thank you, everybody, for all of your support, your help, for your volunteering. It was a wonderful event, and all the departments in the village worked so well together to get it there, to get it together, and it was a very, very nice community event. This Friday, March 10th, at 12 o'clock at the community center, we will be having pizza and a movie. It will be Lightyear, the cartoon. So Village of Suffolk residents have been RSVPing, and it'll start at 12 o'clock. The movie, pizza will be at 12, and the movie at 12:30. So if you're around on Friday and you'd like to stop by, it'll be a nice afternoon over at the community center. March 11th, I will just mention the date, but I know Bruce Simon is here from the Community Foundation. Not Just Battery Saturday is this Saturday, starting at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And again, I'll let Bruce talk more about that. March 24th, for the PD at the community center, the Dare Dance will be at 7:00 p.m. April 1st is our big event at the gazebo. We have our egg hunt coming up, and that will be starting off at 11:00 a.m. Everything will be outside, we're looking forward to the Easter Bunny popping by, and that's on April 1st at 11:00. April 15th, we are looking forward to having the Little League Parade, an opening day. So the parade will start here at Village Hall, go backwards to what our norm parades are. It'll go from here down to the ballfields, and that is April 15th. April 29th is Keep Rockland Beautiful, and that is from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then we just put it out this morning, we put it out, I'm sorry, the mayor's message the other day, but people started to come in today. We are finally back to Broadway. So we opened up tickets to go to New York, New York, which is a brand new show. It's in previews, it will be in previews soon. That is on, again, on April 29th. It is open to Village of Suffolk residents. We've had already a huge turnout this morning. 10:00 a.m., we had our first resident waiting at the door to purchase tickets, so tickets are selling quickly. So that's on April 29th to see New York, New York, and I think that's it.
Can you tell us, I know Lieutenant Janitino's behind you there?
Yes.
Jim, we got your Dare Dance coming up, correct, sir?
Yes.
What's the date again?
March 24th.
March 24th, we got a Dare Dance there. And also you have, we want people to know about registration for Dare Hockey, okay? We'll put it on our posting on the village, and also the police department puts it on theirs. You know, we're ready for the spring chapter or the spring round of Dare Hockey. So, you know, just get the word out there if you can for the kids, okay? Thank you, Lieutenant.
Kathleen, what time was the parade for the Little League?
You know, I don't have the exact time yet. I'm believing 9:30 to start the parade, but I will have more information on that. We'll put it more up on the website.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I could just jump on that. When it comes to the parade, when I met with Jim Hart from Little League, the president of Little League, a couple of things happened at that meeting. We talked about, during COVID, I felt that the kids of the community, all the children of the community went through tremendous, tremendous hurt. And I wanna try to make, I said, why don't you get football involved in the parade? Get as many kids as you can. I wanted to be almost like a parade of heroes, not just Little League, of all the kids that had to go through what they went through. I didn't have to go through it when I went to school, wearing a mask for two years. And I mean, how much of a struggle it was for us, but think about how tough that was on kids. And I asked them to make it a bigger parade than we can. Kathleen, we're gonna try to get the Suffolk High School band and just, you know, we're gonna do a parade, let's just do it right. We're Suffolk, okay?
Yeah, it's gonna be good.
We do love a good parade in Suffolk.
And barbecues, and barbecues, so forget that.
Oh, yes, forgot about the barbecues.
We're gonna do it, let's make it big, let's go big, right? Go big or go home, right? That's what they say? So, okay, thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to open up a public comment period, please. A motion, please?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Made by trustee Corrigan, second by trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Okay. Anybody?
Jim Janitino, Two Memorial Drive. I've been looking for this agenda since about 10 o'clock online, up until a quarter to 7:00. What went wrong?
I wasn't feeling good, Jim, I apologize, sir, I was late because of me.
Yeah, but I'm sure you didn't make the agenda out last night.
No, Jim, I gave you my reason, thank you. I wasn't feeling, thank you.
What is the reason for eliminating workshop meetings? We've had them here for 50 years.
I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
Workshop meetings, we've had them for 50 years. You are the first mayor that eliminated them, other than COVID. I think they even had them on Zoom, right? I mean, the workshop meeting, the way I understood it when I was mayor, was like a trial run for the trustees and any of the public that was interested in what was coming up at the regular meeting. Of course, the public couldn't speak at these meetings. You've gone to many of them, Mike, you've seen me at many of them. So I mean, why all of a sudden is it not the way it should be? Where the public gets a preview of what's coming up? And also, to be honest, these minutes do not go on to like 4 o'clock the day of the meeting. So I don't know what the goal is here. Is the goal to tell the people what's going on, or is it for them not to come? Look around. Nobody's here, I mean, relatively peaceful in the village, I'll give you that. So why would you not want them to know what's going on? No comments.
I'll comment, it's your comment period, when you're done, I'll comment.
No, no, usually when somebody brings something up, you answer it.
Sir, with all respect, I'll choose how I run my meetings, but thank you, Lieutenant.
I'd like you to run it so the public gets information, that's why I'm up here speaking. That's it for now, I'll wait for your answer.
I'll answer it in my mayor's section, thank you.
I figured you didn't want to answer.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Anyone else, any comments? Come on up. Sure, come on up to your microphone, just, you know, just your name and your address, please, it'll be fine.
Hi, my name is Olga Weston, and I live in a 35 Park Place condo. I just had a few questions, one about the situation with the amount of litter in the village. It seems like certain, especially Lafayette Village, Lafayette Avenue. I notice, I walk a lot in the neighborhood, in all streets all the time, and I noticed that there's a lot of litter next to certain businesses, namely in the post office parking lot, which you could see from the parking lot that is next to Java Coffee Place. And Java Coffee parking lot is very littered on the grassy area, grass covered area. And there's, overall, just in general, there's quite a bit of litter that I notice while I walk. And I'm just asking if there are certain regulations, is there businesses required to clean up? How does it work? I participate in the Keep Rockland Beautiful, so I clean up every year, and usually when I walk, I use a garbage bag and pick up a lot of litter. So I'm just interested to know what's regulations and what could be done or improve things? What can I do, and things like that? That's one. And the second one is about general parking situation in the town. I know that there are certain regulations to prevent commuter parking, and that's what I heard. And the parking signs say from 7:00 to 9:00, you can park on certain streets due to street cleaning. I'm not sure if it's, in fact, the street cleaning is the reason. I have friends who travel to visit me and stay with me for several days, and they have to park outside of weekends. And we have always hard time finding them parking spots because they have to get out at 7:00, so at 7:00, we have to wake them up, they have to go find place somewhere else. So that's another thing, I just wanted to know if there are any options for visitors and people who stay overnight outside of weekends? And in snow situations, even worse, there's nowhere you can park at all. So like I called to ask for snow parking this past week, 10 days that we had the snow, and they told me that I have to go somewhere else. Just go somewhere else, like where would I go? Like knock on people's doors and ask them to park in their driveway? Or drive to Maua or Slowsburg or wherever they can park, I don't know. So that's very inconvenient. So that's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you very much, leave your comments. Anthony Devanzo, Sitchcrestwood Drive. First, congratulations, Michael. I haven't been here since you became mayor, I heard good things about you.
Thank you, sir.
My concern are the homes that have been purchased in our village over the last several years that are now becoming rentals. I'd like to know if and can you guys control them, or do we end up like much of Rockland County, Ramapo, Spring Valley, et cetera? And you know what I'm talking about. I spoke to the code enforcers, it seems like your hands are tied, that there's not much you can do as far as making sure that these homes are not modified to house too many people, which obviously we just saw what can happen. Oh, okay. Make your comments, and then I'll... Oh, no, okay, I was just... Yeah, no problem, I'll address it when I'm ready. Yeah, I didn't know whether you can do anything, or we're just stuck with this. And do you guys work with the fire department? I assume you do, and I don't know how you can check these houses out to make sure this is not going to happen to our village, because if it does, you will know where it's gonna end up. History only repeats itself. And that's about it. Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Anyone else, any public comments? May I have a motion to close the public comments, please?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made by trustee Alpert, can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Second by trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I will address these questions in my mayor's time period, okay? Charles, Public Works, please.
Good evening. Mayor, I have six items. Would you want me to go through them all together?
You read them all, and I'll do the percentage, Charles.
Item A, requesting authorization to award the West Maple Avenue Rightway Improvements project for professional services to Booker Engineering in the amount of $18,750. Item B, requesting authorization for payment application number 18 to Pintgaro and Deutsch Consulting Engineers PC for the GoShare backup power for Critical Facilities project in the amount of $430.26. Item C, requesting authorization for payment application number 18 to Pintgaro and Deutsch Consulting Engineers PC for the GoShare hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $6,677.76. Item D, requesting authorization for payment application number 9 to Meal Electric Company for the GoShare hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $40,090. Item E, requesting authorization for payment application number 12 to TAM Enterprises Inc. for the GoShare hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $130,506.25. Item F, requesting authorization for payment application number 5 to Hush Electrical Contracting for the GoShare backup power for Critical Facilities project in the amount of $67,022.50. Any question?
Yeah, your E's and F were not in agreement with my E and F.
I'm sorry, which one?
So E and F, my E was Hush Electrical, my F was TAM Enterprises.
Okay.
But the amounts are correct for those, right?
You're saying that they're flip-flopped, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for that, I just... Yeah. So, all right.
But five to Hush and 12 to TAM?
I'm sorry?
Five to Hush, 12 to TAM.
Yeah, F is, let me look at the agenda then. Yeah, E... Yeah, I got it here, okay. E is for Hush, and F is for TAM, I apologize.
So E is number, payment number 12?
Yeah, so I'll read E and F again.
Yes, thank you.
Authorizing payment of application number 12 to Hush Electrical Contracting for the GoShare backup power for Critical Facilities project in the amount of $67,022.50. And item F is requesting authorization for payment application number 12 to TAM Enterprises Inc. for the GoShare hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $130,506.25.
So, that's still confusing, it still didn't agree quite. So the payment to Hush was number 12 or number 5?
The payment to Hush is application number 12. I'm sorry, Jesus. Jesus. Hush should be number 5, application number 5.
All right, so there's a mistake.
Yeah, the resolutions are correct.
Okay, okay. Resolution is correct, right?
Yeah.
And that's what we call by.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion for consent agenda items 9A to 9F, please? Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Hagan. Can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Albert.
Second by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can I get the pressure, please?
Evening, mayor and board. We have three items on the agenda tonight. The first is, in accordance with good, sound financial practice and in accordance with the comprehensive financial policies we have in place, we would like to transfer $600,000 from the general fund to the debt service fund. This is looked favorably upon credit rating by credit rating agencies such as Moody's.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to transfer $600,000 from the general fund to the debt service fund, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next two involve actually the 2023-2024 budget, which I do know that the mayor will be presenting tonight, the tentative budget. One is to authorize a public hearing to be held April 3, 2023, to consider the adoption of the 2023-2024 tentative budget.
Okay, can I get a motion to authorize a public hearing to be held on April 3, 2023, to consider the adoption of 2023-2024 tentative budget, please? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan.
Second, trustee Hagan.
Seconded by trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
As part of adopting the budget for 2023-2024, we also need a public hearing to set the local law, a public hearing on local law to establish the water rates and the sewer rents for that year. Now, I'll also note that these are the public hearings, not the adoption dates, but the actual public hearings.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the resolution authorizing setting a public hearing on a local order to establish sewer rents and water rates for the 2023 fiscal year? Motion, please?
Trustee Hagan.
Motion made by trustee Hagan. Can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Albert.
Second made by trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, village board. Nothing on the agenda tonight, nothing really going on with the fire department. We will be back next month with the Lo Sap report to finalize that.
Thank you. I just want to thank you. I see the calls you get. I get the beep through at night, and all the calls, you guys are going out at night for us and, you know, keeping an eye on us while we're sleeping, and I know you guys are down also down at the Spring Valley Fire, and, you know, our prayers go with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I handed the clerk the budget here for the upcoming fiscal year. She will now pass that budget out to the other trustees here. I will let you know that zoning and code is very important to me, and also parking, you bring up another subject there. I added another fire inspector into my budget. I added another code enforcer into my budget, and I add another parking person into my budget. I will talk more in a minute. And the new proposed budget for this year is a 0% tax increase to the taxpayers in this village, okay? Even with those additions, it'll be a 0% tax increase. It's a solid budget. We have a public hearing on it next month. Hope everyone do more to welcome and come ask any questions. I know it well, but Mr. Janatino, he is the top expert in the state, and we're lucky and proud to have him. So, on that note here, we're going to go into executive session a little bit with something with the police chief, but I want to address some of the issues that were here. We had our reorganization meeting. We said at that point we would not be doing workshop meetings. I am probably one of the most open mayors this village had in years. I'm in my office every single day. I'm also, I'm also have tried to communicate probably as good as any mayor ever has, if not better. We have open items here. I probably spend about 60 hours a week in the office, plus other things. So, we decided not to do work. The workshop is for us. I have such an open way with these things. If you go and look, it's so open. We've had a 5-0 vote on every, or 4-0 vote on every item because I communicate with them. Those meetings are for us. And when something happens, even at night, I've woken these folks up, these trustees up, because they have a right to know. And I'm very open, so I'm not going to have workshops. I'm going to stick to how I'm doing it, and I think this board will support me in that. I'm sorry, sir. Sorry, sir. Public session's over, sir. I will not be interrupted. Sir, I will not be interrupted, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you. There is a parking problem in this village. When I took over, I realized that, just even how they did the B lot, okay? And it's a problem that I have to address. There are companies in this village that have gone on for years having as much as 70, 80 spots in one lot. And when I discovered, no one knew this number, and it was terrible, okay? Of the people I talked to, they're paying 27 cents to park in that B lot per day. 27 cents. It's not fair to the other taxpayers in this village, right? If you see in my thing, that's why I have a public hearing next to me, to talk about schedule and fees, because certain things haven't been done. I've actually gone with the new building inspector, and we've closed down jobs. I've gone myself, and we closed down jobs. The problem when we closed down a construction job, someone who's doing it illegally, is that the only thing we had in place in this village was that all we could do was to tell them to stop now and go get one. In that schedule of fees, I'm going to be now hitting them with penalty fees of $1,000, $2,000, $5,000, because right now, you might as well go ahead and do the job without a permit. But that's what I'm doing, and I've talked about it, and that'll come up next month. I'm still working on it. You know, it's a lot of work in there. And I'm going to change, in your building, 35 Park Ave, when they build a building, they didn't make enough parking for you. So, unfortunately, now we have to, now we have to go, if someone wants it, I have to send them to the D lot or the F lot because it doesn't exist. I can't give you something I don't have, and that's the problem. That's why when I came in, you know, they had an attitude of here of, okay, a new building can only have 1 point something spots. I say, no, we need two spots per apartment, or it does not work. The builders, when I did it, they said, oh, this is no good. We can't do this. Well, then, don't come here. Every one of them have come back to me to do their buildings. So, zoning to me is extremely important, and it's hard. There are, okay, I'll give you an example. You can have a house in Suffolk with a tax garage. You pay taxes on that property, so you're actually allowed to put bedrooms in that garage because you pay taxes. And some people have a different style of life. They don't care about garages. And this is, when I put my messages out, you'll see, I say, hey, give me answers. You know, tell me what you see. And I'm getting pictures now of how people are putting their garbage cans out there for you, not bringing them in. And I've talked there with the DPW. And the DPW, it's hard to control people's behavior. When I came into office, there was very limited garbage cans on the street. I added garbage cans right away with money that was sitting there from a grant, because I realized, and if you go back and listen to my early meetings, you'll find out that every so many feet you walk, if there's not a garbage can, you're going to throw it on the ground. But there is, and that's why I went and did, I had a Saturday, I had to clean up Saturday. So, before you leave, I love to get your number, okay, when we do these things. But I am working on the parking problem, but I can't fix every piece of damage that's been done. But I will try. I will try with this board, right? And it's a non-political solutions. All I want is solutions. But there are things, I'd like you to talk to the clerk, too, get her number, and she'll tell you where people can park, when they come and when they can't. But I think even those, okay, we have 178 spots in the B lot, 178. Some of those spots are what they call the white spots, that's if you want to go shopping. They've been selling those spots to the businesses, whereas my belief is, if you're going to have your car there sitting there for eight hours, 10 hours a day, that you should walk a little bit further and walk through our town. Because if you come from further away, and you're going to have your car sitting there for eight or 10 hours a day, when lunch comes, you're more likely, if your car is right by the door, to run out of town for lunch instead of staying for lunch. But now, if you've got to walk a block and a half to your car, like most people do all over the city in a lot of places, you're most likely to walk that block and a half and stay in the village or walk 50 feet. So, I have a different mentality on what has to be done here and a direction to uplift this village, and that's what I've been working on. But there's a lot of things that have to be corrected. I'm not, I wasn't happy with the building department, but I have my chance to change it now, and I'm working on that. I don't think there's been too many mayor that's gone and closed construction jobs. I have, and I will continue to do it. I will continue to do it, huh? And I want people to tell me. I gave a commitment to the people of this village, that I gave my heart and soul, and I've been given my blood, heart, and soul, and I'm going to continue to do that because that's called honor. And my honor's not for sale. Thank you very much, folks. I'd like to, just so you know, that budget will be online as of tomorrow, so anyone can look at it, if anyone wants to know about it. It's there, and then we'll also have that public hearing next month. Anyone can say on it, if you have some things you want to say. This is my budget that I present to the board. Now, the board gets to look at it. If they see changes they want to make, they're more than welcome to, huh? But I don't stand alone when I talk about building, code, and zone. My board stands with me also. We recognize it's a big concern. But when I have that code book in my hand, I tell everyone, that code book is a saying for everyone equally. That's the only way you're going to enforce it. It has to be for everyone equally, whatever that book says. And if we need to change that book, which I'm doing with certain days and certain fees, we'll change it. Again, thank you, folks. I'd like now to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel. Personnel matters?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert. Second, please?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Kellogg. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, folks, what we do now is we're going to go into executive session, just talking about stuff with the chief of police. We will not have a vote when we come out. There will be no votes. So, you're more than welcome to stay, or you're more than welcome, whatever you prefer to do, okay? And that'll be our last item of the night, okay? Thank you very much. How we doing, folks? We're back from executive session. Can I please have a motion to close the executive session, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Hagan.
Second made by trustee Hagan. Second made by trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Can I get a motion now to close this meeting, please?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Yeah, motion made by trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Folks, have a nice day. Thank you very much.